Shalom, welcome to The Jewish View. My name is Rabbi Nachman Simon with the Chabados of Delmar together with my co-host Mark Ronis at Statewide News Service and JBizTechFelly.com. Who do we have with us today, Mark?
Well, thanks Rabbi. I'm glad that we could put the show together because we have a very special guest with us today. We have Rodney Wiltshire, who's the president of the Troy City Council. And I'm just so impressed that at age 40, that you, you know, before you were 40, you were president of the Troy City Council. I mean, politics must be in your blood.
No, I wouldn't say politics are my blood, but I am a person who cares deeply about my community and cares deeply about the city that I live in. And, you know, I saw a problem, I saw issues, and I said, I can sit here and complain or I can be part of the solution. And as an engineer, I'm good at finding solutions, so.
But you were also head of the Young Democrats.
Yeah.
You know, you, there was, that's all, politics more than government, you know.
Sure.
But I think that you're, you know, but it's admirable that, you know, more people should be involved. And you were, as head of the Young Democrats, you were getting people involved in Rensselaer County, so.
Yeah.
You know, that's great.
Thank you.
Rabbi, did you have something?
Yeah, I just, you know, you're an engineer and just wanted to figure out what you're doing in the regular life over here, in your normal life, we can say, without the politics.
Yeah, in my regular life, you know, I'm focused on saving the planet, one solar panel at a time. So I'm very much into renewable energy and in solar power.
You know, it's The Jewish View, so I always like putting a Jewish angle on it. And you'd say, well, what's Jewish about the sun? But the Lubavitcher Rebbe, who's the head rabbi in New York County, he passed away 20 years ago, he also was an engineer. I mean, he was a rabbi, but he was an engineer. And you're talking 23, well, he passed away 20 years ago, even 30 years ago. He said people should look, this was the oil crisis with, you know, even still today, there's all the problems with the oil, and we'll get to that also, just even coming to Albany area, you know, shipping it in. And the rabbi was very on the forefront of saying that solar energy was the way to go. And people didn't understand, because even now, that's why I also want second idea, that there, you see the commercials, and I'm a rabbi and you're the engineer, that solar's getting into its own, its own really now.
Yeah.
Now it's getting more economical and.
Yeah.
Before it was just like a really, people weren't doing it, it's catching on.
It is, yeah. People, they didn't trust it, they didn't really understand how it works, they didn't really know if it worked. And I think the more that people have started to adopt solar and put it into their homes and businesses, the more people are saying, I want that too. And it drives the price down, it's just a snowball that's really working to accelerate that rabbi's vision, so, yeah.
I wanted, your name of your company is Empire Solar Store?
Correct.
Okay, but then I wanted to ask you about the Wiltshire Renewable Energy Systems.
So, yeah, Wiltshire Renewable Energy Systems is our legal corporate name, and Empire Solar is the assumed name doing business as, because that's, Wiltshire Renewable Energy Systems is kind of a mouthful, Empire Solar is a little more direct and to the point.
Okay, so what's the, so what's New York State, NYSBE? What is that? Because you get about 25,000 a year from.
Oh, NYSERDA?
Is that NYSERDA, NYSBE? Because I went online and I saw that there was, I know NYSERDA, but it was, you get these PV incentive programs?
Yeah, that's from NYSERDA.
That's from NYSERDA?
Yeah.
Okay, and what is that used for? What do you?
Basically, it's like a gift certificate, so, you know, there's a.
Where can I get one?
Anybody can get them if you're.
Buy some sunlight over here.
If you're, exactly, if you're a rate payer in New York City, you have, or in New York, you have the eligibility to get those incentives. And basically, NYSERDA is just the administrator of it, but if the retail price of a solar system is, let's say, $30,000, you might get $7,000, $9,000 off of that cost right up front. And that, you know, just makes it more affordable.
For the solar panels.
Yeah.
How much, how many years would it be economically to pay it off? Like, you know, come out even?
Um, where, depending on where you live, but in the capital district, the rates of electricity, national grid customers have jumped so high that it's taking about three and a half years.
So much.
So, no, it's not at all.
So is your business soaring?
It's, this is our best year.
Sunshine.
Yeah, this is our best year yet, and we.
How many years have you been in business?
Uh, this will be our sixth year.
Sixth year.
Yep.
It says, yeah, 2010, it says.
Uh, no, 2008, we opened up in Troy.
Okay.
Yep.
Does it make a difference when, you know, I thought you were going to say it depends where you are, and then you went into electrical, but does it make a difference in sun? I mean, if we'd be in Arizona, would it be different than?
Yeah.
Capital district?
Yeah, there's a difference there. The biggest issue is the shade, and if you have a tree that cuts out the sun, then that, basically, it's like turning off the light switch. But we, you know, our latitude is higher up in the, on the earth, so the closer you are to the equator, the better sun that you have, the more hours of sun throughout the day. But really, the biggest obstacle is trees. If you have a house that's covered with trees, then your solar system's just not going to produce as much, regardless whether you live in Arizona or New York.
Right, but you can position the solar panels.
One side of the house?
Yeah, one side of the house to get the most amount. So even if you have trees in the front, you can still put those panels in the back.
Yes.
If the sun comes there.
Right.
And that's more.
What if you have cloudy days for five days?
Then you have cloudy days for five days. There's really nothing you can do about it.
Yeah, but the electricity will go down.
No, the national grid kicks in.
Yeah, you're, yeah, you're tied to the grid, and basically, the grid acts as a battery. So everything that you normally do now would still happen, it's just when it's really sunny out and during the day and you don't have usage. Like, if you're out of your house during the day and you don't have any lights on, maybe just the refrigerators on or something like that, all that sunlight is being pushed back into the grid, and you're getting credited for it. So on cloudy days, on, at nighttime, then you.
So it's not like the energy, solar energy is being stored when you're not home?
Right.
It's being sent to the grid and you're getting credit, and then you're using it? Do you, the credit you're getting is the same as what you would, the same amount?
Yes.
That you would use?
Up to your, um, up to your usage. Once you go past your usage, then you get like the wholesale rate. But yeah, if you don't have batteries, if you had batteries in your house, then you could actually store your energy and use it at night. But essentially, your neighbors are using the electricity. So it goes out to the grid, and then, you know, telephone poles, your next door neighbor, the business down the street, that uses the electrons.
Now, do you find, like, I know there was a company, Castleman Electric, and all of a sudden I see Castleman Solar.
Yeah.
You know, and I see some of his lawn signs around. So I'm wondering, are there more solar companies now?
Absolutely.
This is.
This is a hot market. It's not the biggest market in the, in the state or in the world, but, or in the country, but this is a very hot market, and you see a lot of companies that are coming in, a lot of national companies that are, you know, not from the capital district, and they're, they're starting to put roots down here.
So you really have to promote yourself?
Yeah.
You have competition, you really got to get, is most, are most of your companies in Rensselaer County, or?
Uh, no, I would say, I think there are three of us in Rensselaer County that I can think of, but.
Well, I mean, how many, your customers?
No.
The people you install the solar panels for?
They're all over. We've got customers in Reinbeck, Catskill, Ticonderoga, Fort Plain, we actually have a customer in Ithaca, which is, I think, 260 miles away.
What about Albany County?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Because I don't see your, you know, you know all about lawn signs when you complain, but I don't see your.
You, you know, the funny thing is, they're out there, you just, it's such, it's still such an infantile industry. Solar represents about 0.1% of the energy production. So, I mean, wind is, is about 1%.
So you're saying that the average bill, the average, for installation of the panels and to purchase the panels, is, let's say, is 20,000, you're saying, on average?
Um, for the average New York house, I would say the sticker price is around $24,000.
Okay.
And then after your incentives.
Comes down to 15.
Coming out, 15, 16.
15,000.
Yeah, and then you get tax credits, so when everything is said and done.
Do you set up a credit plan where people could pay this out? Or they got to give you a check for 15,000?
No, we don't do. No, they, yes, you have to get your own financing for that. I mean, we work with the banks, and there are, you know, ways that you can either finance it or lease it, but, you know, we don't provide that credit in our house.
How many employees do you have?
We've got 12 employees.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Beautiful. Are they all engineers?
Hmm, no, um, got two that are engineers, the rest are, you know, from very disciplines. I've got a guy who's got a bachelor's in, in government administration.
And is he putting the panels?
Yeah, yeah, and he's working.
Up on the roof and all that?
Yeah, he couldn't find any jobs doing that.
When there's electricity, for example, so, most people, I don't mean most, I shouldn't say that, natural gas. So they'll say, well, I'm getting free electricity, why do I need this natural gas? Maybe I should go to electrical heating. Is that what happens?
Yes, we actually have a customer right now, have a very low bill, and, you know, they're retired, they don't have any kids there, they just kind of, you know, don't really use a lot of electricity, but they've got a great roof, and they do have the, the means to afford it. And they're like, fit as many solar panels as you can on here, tell me what that's going to produce, and I'm going to start buying an electric water heater, electric heating, because I want to supply my own power.
Wow.
Yeah.
So let me ask you about your other interests. I mean, obviously, alternative energy is huge.
Yeah.
For you, but, you know, there's other types of, there's wind, there's geothermal, there's other types. Why, why did you settle on solar?
Um, solar is something that everyone can utilize, there are.
Where they can relate to.
Well, I suppose they can relate to.
Because geothermal is going underground.
Right.
And maybe people say, well, here I am getting the heat from, you know, from the core of the earth.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe that's a little too fancy for people.
And that, that's not exactly.
And when you have a big windmill and, you know, that's going to upset the neighbors.
Windmills produce a lot of, or have a lot of conditions in order for them to work appropriately. You need basically good open space. With wind, you got to go big or go home, and you can't have a short wind turbine, you got to have a really tall tower in order to make it work very, you know, cost effectively. Plus, there's maintenance involved in, in turbines and geothermal. And essentially, solar is scalable, so no one really ever gets one single solar panel, that's kind of silly, but you could. You could get one solar panel and it could do something for you.
Try it out.
Yeah. And then, you know, at the same point, if you wanted to add on 10, 20, you can kind of grow your system. With a wind turbine or a geothermal, it's kind of like, it's all in, you know, you got to do it from the design. You don't just go add another blade to the wind turbine and it produces more power. You have to do it right from the beginning, and that's it.
Yeah.
Or you scrap it and you do it again.
What about, how are you competitive, how are you priced competitively? How do you know what the other companies are charging?
Um, I mean, we keep our margins pretty tight, we have low overhead, I don't have shareholders that I have to report to or anything, it's a family owned business, my wife and I own it, so I know.
And the store is right down the block from where you live.
Yeah, it's, exactly, so I mean.
I read that somewhere.
Yeah, it is, it's, you can see my house from, from my parking lot.
Okay, no excuse for not showing up.
Yeah, exactly. Um, we, you know, we don't have, we don't have big fancy trucks, we, we just don't have a lot of overhead, we kind of get the job done. So I know our prices are great, you know, they're, they're able to sustain the business, but also.
Well, I know that you know they're great, but how do you, but where's the empirical evidence?
Um, I think we get feedback from customers. Every time we have a new customer that comes to us, and let's say they've shopped, they've had a couple of different proposals, sometimes they share the proposals, so I literally can look at them and compare apples to apples. Other times, they will just let us know that, you know, your price was this, or your service was that, or your value was that. So we know that we are, unless someone's giving a system away, a competitor is saying, we just want to give it to you for free, we usually have the best price.
Let me just, that made me, because of course, we say you're the Troy Common Council President, what about government? I mean, they're always, they always say they're trying to save money.
Yeah.
You know, I hope they are over here, but, you know, they're always in debt, but maybe, you know, there would be government, there's police stations, there's fire stations, I mean, just even the government offices.
Would it be a conflict of interest if you were to help, if they were to put an RFP, request for proposal out?
In the city of Troy?
Yeah.
I mean, it wouldn't be a conflict of interest, but it would be something I would have to be 100% open and transparent about, you know, I would, everything's laid out on the lines.
What about the perceived, the perception might be moving?
Well, I probably, if there was something that would require me to vote on it, I would recuse myself from that vote, but, you know.
Is the government looking into it? I mean, from your government, whether it's your, you know, it's your offer or not, but I'm just thinking, try to save, you know, I'm thinking of government with you, and, you know, it's a way to save money.
When, when I first got elected to the city council, we have a few brownfields in the city of Troy, and I identified them as being prime opportunities for a solar farm, essentially, and so.
What are brownfields, just nothing there? I mean, I've never heard the term.
Contaminated?
Yeah, it's contaminated, it's a, you know, a piece of land that is so contaminated that you cannot build on.
How do you think contaminated in the middle of Troy?
Because of chemicals. No, there were chemicals that were dumped there, and then you can't.
From a factory, you mean?
From a factory or from a business that, that at the time.
Gas station.
It might have been, like, General Electric dumped PCBs in the Hudson River.
Right.
In the 1940s and 50s. But they were told that they could by the state.
Right.
Now, they say, oh no, we were wrong, but you got to pay to clean it up. And GE's got to put in multi-millions and billions of dollars in order to clean up what the state said was okay for them to dump.
So people always did this, these are fluid in lands.
So this is, so they abandoned these lands and these contaminated lands, and they.
So you want to use them in a positive way?
Yeah, one of our brownfields is a former landfill, so you can imagine that's, you know, contaminated with whatever, you know, has been dumped in the landfill. And we have, it's essentially a 90 acre landfill, about 45 acres of it are good, prime spots for solar. And so that is a potential spot that we could use to install a solar system that the city of Troy could reap the electrical benefits from.
So.
And so, we, we passed a resolution two years ago to proceed with that, and we have worked on a RFP to send out to potential bidders. We had some interest this year in a company that wanted to apply for a CFA. In order to do that.
CFA is?
They combined, oh.
Okay, never mind.
The, the funding application.
Okay.
And, and they.
And they were, this electricity could be, I mean, how far is it away? A few miles?
Oh, this is right in the city of Troy, yeah. I mean, it's on the outskirts, but it's right, you know.
And there's no problem with transferring electricity?
No, no.
I mean, I always think a home goes right in.
Yeah.
But I mean, here.
No, it goes to the grid and it goes, yeah, they have it worked.
It's, it's, it goes through a transformer.
I'm sure they have it, I'm just trying to figure out how it works.
If you, if you push electricity over wires for any distance, you want to up the voltage so the current stays low, the ampacity of the wire doesn't get overloaded, and essentially that's, you know, those wires that are very high up on the telephone poles, those are multi-thousand volt wires that are pushing electricity, very low current, but high voltage. Then the transformers step it down to the voltage that we can use inside our houses. So essentially, the same thing happens in reverse. We start out with a system, 600 volts or so, push it into the transformer, that knocks it up to its transmission voltage, and it goes where it does, and then, you know, brings it back down. It's all very automatic.
So where, so you have the CFA, you have a company that applied?
They looked at it, they didn't apply for it, but it's still.
Okay, but why not you? Why didn't your company apply?
Um, well, that's, not for conflict of interest or anything, but that's something I want to see happen within the city, and I want to help guide that to, to happen. I'm not looking to do that per se, myself.
Okay.
Other communities, sure, open game, you know, if Albany wants to do something, or Bethlehem wants to do something, you know, I'd certainly be looking over there.
Is it because people aren't into, because it's so new?
It's not new, it's been around 40 years.
Well, I know, I know.
As old as he is, it's been around.
No, I know it's around, but like I say, now, maybe I'm wrong also, but I just see now, it's like picking up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, people, there's ads and there's, I mean, again, your company's not that old either, but I'm just saying it's more economical. Am I wrong or am?
No, you're absolutely right. And you asked a question earlier about the governments and, and what they're doing and what they're not doing. The state, NYSERDA, when I first started in solar, their program, their incentive program was a lot higher, but it also had different categories for incentives. And nonprofits, or municipalities, the churches, the fire departments, police stations, any nonprofit actually received an incentive at a greater rate, which meant that, because there's tax credits on the backend, but if you're a non-taxpaying entity, you can't take advantage of them. So a system costs what a system costs. I don't care if I put it on your house or on your business, that's what it costs. And NYSERDA used to incentivize at a higher rate those nonprofits so that they could still take advantage of it. They eliminated that, and what that did is it created a void, and that void was filled by companies that do power purchase agreements now. And essentially, what a power purchase agreement does, which is not what, what we do, is they will install solar for no upfront cost or for limited upfront cost, but they use your infrastructure for that, and then you pay a slightly reduced rate for electricity for the duration of your term. And what that does is it takes the ownership away from the municipality, or the church, or the nonprofit organization, and when they take that ownership away, you also lose some of the benefits on the backend. See, and the Regional Greenhouse Gas Initiative states, the Regi states, there's 10 of us here in the Northeast, we participate in SREC trades. And we don't have the SRECs here in New York yet, but if and when the SRECs in New York come, all of those attributes, which are financial benefits, would not come to the municipality, so unfortunately.
Who's going to bring it? I mean, the government agency, or?
Yeah, yes, New York's, you know, hopefully Governor Cuomo would do that.
I have to ask you, we got to change topics for a minute.
Sure.
We, in Albany County, there's this problem with oil tankers coming through the city of Albany and through county, the county, many municipalities.
Right.
In Albany County. What's going on in Troy? Do you have any problem with oil tankers? There was a derailment in Scotticoke, but nothing.
Yeah.
It wasn't a big deal, but, you know, what's your position on oil tankers and?
Well, my position, a couple of things. Number one, I think we shouldn't be using fossil fuels, there's enough abundant energy from the sun, and even the wind, if you want to kick that in, which is of course a derivative of the sun, to power everything that we need, so.
But given that we are using these oil tankers that are originating in North Dakota.
Yep.
And they're coming through our municipalities here, are they safe tankers? If they derailed, are we going to have another incident that happened in Quebec where it decimated a town?
It, I mean, it absolutely could, you know. We discussed this with our, our former police commissioner last year, and when that happened, we said, what's our plan? What are we going to do? And we don't have one in Troy. Now thankfully, we don't have that kind of train, uh, tank traffic coming through the city. Troy, you know, 100 years ago had that, but right now, it's very limited rail that's coming through for, and it's just more or less heavy cargo, but no, you know, tremendously volatile chemicals.
So the train that derailed in Scotticoke, where was that coming from? Like, the?
I don't know the route. I don't know the route that that, that traveled, it probably went up and over and came back in.
But Troy is safe?
Troy is, Troy is safe per se, yes.
Okay, so let me ask you about the heroin epidemic everyone's talking about. Is Troy impacted by the heroin epidemic?
Yeah.
Tell me about, talk about it.
Well, luckily to our, you know, to our just good fortune, we haven't had any high-profile fatalities due to it, but the heroin epidemic is certainly happening, and our police are, we've got more undercover drug units that are actually trying to, you know, stem the influx of it, and they're, you know, looking to get the dealers, but there's a huge problem because it's so cheap and it's economic. So I believe what one of the narcotics officers told me is that, you know, a regular hit of heroin is cheaper than a pack of cigarettes now. So, and they're selling it everywhere. They're selling it out of the little bodegas, they're selling it out of the corner stores. It's a very readily available product.
Where they making it? I mean, you say marijuana is from a plant, do you know, I mean, do they say where?
What are you looking at me for?
You're the new reporter. I'm the rabbi, I see the end results when people complain to me, there are kids around the narc, I hate the narcotics.
But heroin is, is made in a factory, right?
I'm not an expert.
You don't know either, okay.
Yeah, I'm really not.
I'll tell you what, we'll come back to this.
All right.
We'll have a whole show, we'll have law enforcement officials, and we'll have a whole show on it.
I mean, it's, as a city, we have more population, so we have, you know, significant drug activity within the city just in general, but it seems like most of the, the problems have happened in the suburban sections surrounding.
So what's your biggest crime problem in Troy? Well, don't tell me there's no crime.
No, I wasn't going to say that, I mean, that's a hard question to answer, I mean, I guess I would.
You got to get the police chief on here.
Yeah.
Well, we're getting there.
I'd probably say violence, you know.
Well, you had the problem with CoCo Pelle's.
Yeah.
Which is a Jewish owned bar, I got to tell you, very glick.
Yeah, yeah.
So tell me, you know, what happened, you know, this past January, there was some problems with the police coming in and the, and the people, patrons there were acting out against the police, and I want to be kind about this.
Yeah, I mean.
So what, where's the up, you know, now eight months later, you know, where are we with the CoCo Pelle's? Is it quiet now? Is it going smoothly, or what?
Yeah, I mean, CoCo Pelle's is quiet, there hasn't been any more activity.
Negative.
Negative activity surrounding CoCo Pelle's. I, I, you know, I've spoke to the owners of CoCo Pelle's quite a bit, and their business has been negatively affected by just the, the stigma and the activity that has, has come down there. It's another business across the street that also, you know, was also impacted negatively. So that whole area has suffered just from, you know, the kind of things that have happened down there. And that's not a, that's not something that I think is due and attributable to CoCo Pelle's or that restaurant or that bar in particular. I think that is a, you know, an isolated incident and a scene that has happened. Every community, every street, every block in Troy has a different vibe and a different flavor, and this one has, you know, just the right mix to produce that kind of stuff. I mean, there's late night pizza joints, there are, you know, it's a major.
You have Little Italy section, you have the art section, the antique section. Little Italy section, you have the art section, the antique section. What's your favorite section?
It's funny you ask. Uh, my favorite section in Troy, I love Broadway, not Broadway, State Street, I love State Street. If you go on the river and look east on State Street, it's by far the most beautiful look inside the city, I think. Um, and as you walk that way, it's great. And there are so many nice, cool restaurants and scenes, there's the, not Daisy Baker's, but right below Daisy Baker's Bacchus, when you, when you curve around on Second Street, which also has the wine bar.
And the Troy Music Hall is right there.
Troy Music Hall is right there, Christ Church, St. Paul's is there, all of, you know, there's just so many, you know, wonderful things. Then the approach as you go up to RPI, that's a, that's my favorite spot.
Tell me about the brew cycle.
The what?
Brew cycle.
Brew cycle?
You don't know about.
Oh, the brew cycle, the bicycle! Yeah, yeah, sorry, I thought you meant like, the cycle of how to build, make beer, I'm sorry, yeah, that's the coolest thing.
Yeah, tell me about this.
Um, so, you know, it's a, a bike that's kind of like a boat, I really can't, it's not a bike, it's a vehicle that's got a bar and a bartender, and people get on it, and everybody pedals to move it around the city. And they stop at a bar, you get off, and you go do your thing and have some fun, and you get back on and drink some more and pedal around.
Just the last few minutes though, you know, we talked a few things negatively about Troy, you know, and the crime. But, I mean, it's been on an upbeat, seems to me, again, just from, again, I'm a commenter looking at it, but the lakefront is moving up into downtown.
Yeah, Troy's doing great.
Spend some time there at the Beth Tefilla synagogue, I was the rabbi there for the High Holidays for a few years, a good few years ago. So, you know, we walked around, so I know a little bit about it.
Well, if you've never been to Beth Tefilla synagogue, you have a duty as common council, city council president, to pay a visit. This is out of a different era, a different time, and if you want, I'll take you over there, and I'll introduce you to the folks there. But, I mean, this is right on Front Street and.
Eighty-two River Street.
Yeah, River Street.
Oh, lots of, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So let me just ask you, what's your position on casinos?
Um, I voted yes to, you know, support, we had a resolution in Troy to support the applications from East Green Bush and the city of Rensselaer.
Why do you like casinos?
Um, I mean, you know, to be completely honest, I think they're a lot of fun. You know, I enjoy myself at a casino, I don't, I don't have any gambling problems or issues like that, but I do think they're valid, fun entertainment, you know what you're getting into. Um, and I think that, you know, part of any economic engine for any major community is entertainment and, you know, travel, and that brings people in, and it's a, it's a really, it's, you know, it's a good thing to happen.
I, I'm sorry to do this to you, because, but I had to ask you, and it's really a quick answer.
Sure.
Uh, in the political side, you and the county Democratic chairman, are you, did you patch things up, or?
Oh, no, I mean, right now, we're in a, a primary that we're facing each other on a, for the Democratic committee seats for the election district eight. So right now, we're actually going head to head in a primary election for September ninth.
Committee men?
For committee men here.
Okay, so are you on the, you're on the outs with the county chairman?
Yeah, I mean, he has, he has not made it a secret that he's gone out of his way to undermine my candidacy for the council, my position as the council president. Um, and, you know, even has, in my opinion, has gone so far as to have personal attacks against me. And it's, you know, it's really unfortunate.
Must feel uncomfortable.
It's very uncomfortable, and for a while there it was, because people, you know, kind of looked at me like, you know, is there a problem with you? And, you know, it's, it's hard to continue to try to sell yourself to everyone about, you know, I'm a, a good guy, but I think my record, my activities within the city, people have started to appreciate and understand who I am, and they understand who he is.
And you're next in line to be mayor if the mayor has to step down, I believe, or?
Well, I mean, if.
What's the order of succession?
There, there's no, um, oh, you're talking about if somebody, if he resigned?
Or dies, or in office, or something, I mean, like in Albany, the common council president is next in line to take over for the mayor.
Um.
Are you next in line?
I don't know, to be completely honest, what the.
Because they say this is a stepping stone to being mayor.
I think it's, I mean, there's a.
Looking for higher office somewhere?
There's the deputy mayor who is, who he has appointed, who I would assume would take over.
Well, you'll look into it.
But, yeah, I don't really know.
You might be next in line in succession and not know it.
Yeah, that's a good question, and I don't know the answer to that.
All right, Mark, I think we're out of time. Want to thank you and wish you the best of luck and blessings, and you have, you're a young person with a lot of energy and a lot of skills, and we only wish you the best with all success, with good health.
Thanks for coming on, Rabbi.
Thank you, my pleasure, glad to be here.